Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council Municipal Authority. It's June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M. We're here in the Council Chambers, which is located at twelve South Fifth Street in the Centennial Building in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. Tonight, we'll have our invocation done by Dennis Kaufman from Chisholm Trail Presbyterian Church, followed by the flag salute. Mr. Kaufman? Please stand.
Bow your heads in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for creating our nation. On this July fourth holiday week, we ask that you continue to guide and direct all of our government officials in their work. Guide and direct our work as well, so together we can continue to have a great country, state, and locality to call home. Thank you for all our blessings. May we continue to receive blessings, oh Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you can be seated. Roll call.
Selby?
Here.
Wooten?
Here.
Yonda?
Here.
Gilliland?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Right, we have no presentations, proclamations. If you are wanting to speak on item nine, then we will wait and do that when we have that in our agenda, not at the visitor time. Do we have any visitors who would like to speak? Right. Then we will recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. Item one A, YMA Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion to approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of four hundred twenty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item two A, Consider Approving Budget Amendments for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Now we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Item one, Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion that will approve: A. The minutes of the regular meeting of June sixth, two thousand and twenty-three; B. Payment of material claims in the amount of one million, one hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred four dollars and twenty-three cents; C. The renewal agreement with TurnPro Aquatics for the maintenance of the six city ponds from March through November in the amount of eight hundred eighteen dollars per month, as recommended by the Park Maintenance Director; D. The renewal of the existing inter-local government cooperative cooperation agreement with the city of Bethany, providing use of the Yukon Jail for the term of July first, two thousand and twenty-three, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at a rate of forty-two dollars per day per prisoner; E. The renewal of the existing inter-governmental agreement with Oklahoma City for the regional household hazard waste collection program for the term between July first, two thousand and twenty-three, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager; F. Designating items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal; and G. Setting the date for the next regular council meeting for Thursday, July sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, seven P. M. in the Council Chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any reports of boards, commissions, or city officials?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to to point out that we finished with five point two oh percent increase for our sales tax this year, this fiscal year.
That is wonderful. Thank you. All right. Item three, Consider Approving Budget Amendments for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Yonda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item four, Consider A Motion To Approve Resolution Number Two Thousand and Twenty-three dash twelve, A Resolution Supporting Continued Participation In The Main Street Program, As Recommended By The Main Street Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item five, Considering Entering Into Agreement With Team Design For The Cost Of Services For A Field Survey For The Hydraulic Study And Construction Plans, Including Bidding, Construction Administration, And Inspections For The Health Center Parkway Drainage Improvement, Not To Exceed A Cost Of Seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-four dollars, As Recommended By The City Engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was curious as someone, have we, like, been able to determine what has caused? Is it just more construction that's created more of a drainage issue?
It's just more area and more impervious area that over time is accumulated in that area.
Okay.
And so that's what we'll be looking at. Yeah.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Item six, Consider Entering Into An Agreement With Team Design For The Cost Of Services For A Twelve-Inch Sanitary Sewer Line, Including Bidding, Construction Administration, And Inspections Located From Frisco Ridge Phase Two To Interstate Forty, Not To Exceed A Total Cost Of Twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars, As Recommended By The City Engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Item seven, Consider A Motion To Approve Change Order Number One For The Two Thousand and Twenty-three Concrete And Asphalt Paving Drainage Water And Sewer Contract, In The Amount Of Fifty-five thousand, nine hundred eleven dollars and thirty-seven cents For The Parkland Lift Station, As Recommended By The City Engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Will this alleviate the gusher in the alley?
We hope so.
Me too.
We're putting in bigger pumps and putting in a grinder to chop it up and we will no longer have the confined space, having employees, maintenance people have to go twenty-three feet down to work on it, so it'll be much better.
Good. And we need to tell people that Clorox wipes do not go down the drain.
That's what's catching it so bad.
So please, do not put Clorox wipes, especially if you live in Parkland, too. All right? Let's vote, please.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Okay, eight, Consider A Motion To Approve An Ambulance Service Agreement Extension Between The City Of Yukon, Oklahoma, And Patford EMS of Oklahoma Incorporated, Effective July first, two thousand and twenty-three, Through August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Can...
Yeah, why is that date?
Very short date.
The reason being is because we are going to talk about this contract at the next study session.
Okay.
And Roger decided that we needed to do an extension on the on the current contract. And we were...
The existing one terminated on June thirtieth, and so we wanted to make sure that we were covered by a contract during that negotiation time period.
And then we'll have a study session. Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm, thank you, because I was like, that's not right. All right, let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
All right, the one everyone's waiting on. Number nine, Consider A Motion To Approve Ordinance Number Fourteen Thirty-seven, An Ordinance Which Amends The Code Of Ordinances Of The City Of Yukon, Oklahoma, By Amending Chapter Two One Four Retail Marijuana Establishments, Deleting Section Two Fourteen Dash Eighty-two Medical Marijuana Growing Facilities For Personal Use, Deleting Section Two Fourteen Dash Eighty-three Permit Inspections And Other Requirements, Amending Section Two Fourteen Dash Three B Location Restrictions To Clarify Computation Of Measurements, Amending Section Twenty Two Fourteen Dash Four C Conditions Of Operation To Change Hours Of Operation For Retail Establishment To Nine A. M. To Ten P. M. Daily, Adding A New Section Two Fourteen Dash Eighty-four Other Regulations And Declaring An Emergency. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Right. Any discussion?
I have, I have, I know there's some people that like to speak. I have a question. I, I need help clarifying my understanding of the impact or the, you know, the result of the deleting of the, um, on the personal growth. How, what impact are we going to see there in practice?
The city has not been enforcing that since the lawsuit was filed shortly after the ordinance was passed. The judge enjoined the enforcement of that provision, and so we're simply deleting it out of the code to meet the court's order on that.
Okay.
Specific.
Okay, all right. Jaden Fortenberry?
Just to clarify, do I have three minutes?
Three minutes, and state your name and your address, please. Remember that we are not not ignoring you, we just can't respond.
Absolutely. My name's Jaden Fortenberry, I have eight thirteen Montreal Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. First off, I want to thank each and every one of you guys for coming up here and spending your time with us to help support us as a community and to try to get this issue resolved. Today, I'm here to talk about a couple of key issues regarding us as a community not being able to receive the plant that our government has deemed us as a medicine. What is vitally important today is to treat this as an emergency that it is. I want to ensure that we do an emergency vote on this specific issue today, so that way we don't have to wait the thirty-day period if it were to pass, and our medical patients, or our legal medical patients can get the access they immediately deserve. First off, I want to bring up some numbers, which I think are vitally important to today's discussion, since this does have to do with medical marijuana, a very high tax bringer in Oklahoma. In March of twenty-three, uh, March of two thousand and twenty-three, Yukon enforces the shutdown of all dispensaries in Yukon, which is important to note, because as June seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the OMA released its reports on tax income for the this following year and this current year. So I want to make it very, very clear that in March of la, of this year, we only made five point five million dollars in taxes, while in March of last year, we made six point seven eight million dollars. And this isn't just a one-off occurrence either. In April of two thousand and twenty-two, we made six point one million dollars, whereas in April of two thousand and twenty-three, we only made five point seven. Uh, we can continue this with May of two thousand and twenty-two being at six point one, May of two thousand and twenty-three being at five point seven, um, and more tax, we are literally making less tax money right now than we were during peak pandemic. So I think it's pretty clear that this is impacting our tax revenue, our tax money, which in turn affects what we are able to do as a city. Uh, last time I stood up here at this podium, I brought up some of the issues that were very important that the community was facing, such as our veterans with PTSD, our elderly with severe pain, our hard-working community members that work late hours, and not being able to get the access to the medical marijuana at the times they need. Today, I'm going to share with you a couple more experiences I had on my Sunday shift in Bethany, which is where all of our Yukon patients have been being sent while they can't purchase on Sunday. So my first patient was, have, has a very long, sad history of surgeries and just a whole bunch of stuff with the medical industry, so she can barely move around her. By the help of her husband, she manages to come to us every single time that she needs any rubs, ointments, tinctures, or any other cannabis products that might be able to help her through her day-to-day life. As I, as, as y'all sit here, I want you to imagine your grandma having to drive an extra fifteen minutes into another city just to find any type of relief throughout her day. I also can name thousands of other patients that I deal with throughout my week that would bring a tear to your eye and would tear at your heart, but I think we get the point. This is a medicine that needs to be accessed. So, but what we're clearly feeling, failing to realize is that this medicine is not something that you get to dictate when and where patients are allowed to purchase. They don't get to pick when they're sleepless, our veterans don't get to pick when they're having their flashbacks, my grandpa doesn't get to pick when his knees give out, or my stepfather doesn't get to pick when and when he can't get out of bed. But you guys sit up here because you care about our community. That's very clear. Each and every one of y'all care about the community. So I want y'all to realize that our community needs access to this plant when and whenever they actually feel the pain. So I'm asking you to think about your community, yourself, your friends, your family members, and if you care enough about them to give them access to a healthier, natural alternative medicine when they are in times of need. At the end of the day, what negative impact could it possibly have to vote yes on this issue? With that, I think, thank you, and I rest my case.
Thank you. Okay, James Amway?
Roger, a question. We're, in this section, can we discuss?
I mean, generally speaking, in comments from the public at the beginning in visit, the visitor section, you can't interact because it's not an agenda item, but this, since it's an agenda item, you can't change.
Did you have a question for him?
No, I just thought you'd said that we couldn't.
Oh, you know, I was thinking visitor section.
I just wanted to measure.
There, there's a distinction between the two.
Yeah, sorry.
James Amway, sixteen four ten Sunridge Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma, seven three zero nine nine. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, and fellow members of beloved community, today I stand before you to shed light on a matter of great importance, the accessibility of medical marijuana throughout the day. Our town, known for its compassion, progression, and embraces the benefits of legal cannabis, acknowledging its potential to alleviate suffering and improve lives, yet we find ourselves facing an obstacle that hampers our collective wellbeing, the reconstruction of medical marijuana sales during syrup hours, hindering those in need of their therapeutic properties. First and foremost, we, we must recognize the profound impact medical marijuana has on the lives of countless individuals within our community. We have heard the stories of pain and suffering, the battles against chronic illness and debilitating conditions for many medical marijuana users. As a beacon of hope, offering relief where traditional treatments have fallen short, by resisting, restricting access to those medical benefit, uh, medical protections during Pacific hours, we inadvertently create unnecessary hurdles for those already burdened by their conditions. Imagine for a moment, a patient whose pain intensifies during the night, disrupting their sleep and dismissinging those quality of life. Should we deny those, uh, the, the solace they seek? Should we limit their access to the medicine that holds those potential to alleviate their suffering? I dare say, as a compassionate community, we cannot bear the weight of such decision. For the most, let us not forget the economic benefits that stern the availability of medical marijuana. As we stand on the, on the progress, it is our duty to nurture and growth our local economy by enabling the sales of medical marijuana throughout the day. We foster an environment that encourages entrepreneurship, job creation, and revenue generation. These funds and terms can be reinvested into our communities, supporting vital infrastructure, education, and public services that benefit each and every one of us. My fellow residents, today we stand at the crossroads, a chance to champion the values that define our town. We have the opportunity to be at the front foremost of progression and be a beacon of compassion and accessibility of those seeking relief from pain and suffering. Together, let us send a reassuring message to our elected officials, encouraging them to reconsider the limitations that hinder our communities' wellbeing. Together, we can create a future where availability, availability of medical marijuana knows no bounds, a future where no one must suffer in silence or face unnecessary, unnecessary barriers on their path to wellness. Let us stand united on our conviction for those through unity that we will bring out the change that our community deserves. Thank you, and may compassion guide your journey to a brighter and more inclusive future for all.
Thank you. Okay, discussion.
I, I felt that the time request was very reasonable, so I would support that.
My concern is, even this past Sunday, there was some non-compliance, and I get emails when there's non-compliance, guys. You know, I just want, if we make these laws, compliance with them, okay? I, I don't want to get emails and have to track down sources for non-compliance. What are your guys' thoughts on this?
I'm in full support of it.
I, I do have a question, and I don't know who the best person in the room to answer the question is, so I'll put it out there. So, um, we heard one person make the argument tonight, but I've heard others in the recent past talk about, make the point that people can't control when they may need a particular treatment, the time of day. But, so, my question is kind of an operations question that I would have no idea. Are, are people that have a, a medical card, is it not treated like other prescriptions where you can get a particular amount that should last you a particular amount of time so that a person with such a prescription wouldn't be, you know, cut off guard, not having treatment that they need?
So I guess my, so from what I'm understanding from your question is, like, why not just, like, kind of buy in bulk ahead of time and kind of prepare yourself for the Sunday that it's going to be closed, kind of thing?
Right.
Okay, so with that, I would have to kind of come at, come and say, like, number one, money is an issue with a lot of these patients. A lot of them are servers or things of that nature, so they get paid on their daily rate, whatever that be, making tips or however they get paid, so they can only afford to buy so much while affording for their essential, essential needs for the day as well. Um, and some patients, I mean, just are incredibly busy. I have very many patients that work six days a week, so they're busy Friday through Saturday, and it's not really an option until it comes up to Sunday, whenever they need to purchase. While, yes, with the medical marijuana part, I could read the back of it and tell you, I think it's three ounces allowed per legal limit, something, I don't remember, I think seventy-two ounces of concentrate or edibles or something like that, but we do have a legal limit on the daily purchase amount, but the main massive, the main reason I see patients every single day instead of seeing them once a week is, like I said, because they make tips or make daily incomes, and so they're not able to afford it. Um, and big bulk purchases at once, it's more single, smaller purchases, whatever they can get their hands on, like, um, in order to, to cure their pain.
But it wouldn't be something to where, I mean, you could buy that day by going on Sunday, so you wouldn't be the middle of the night. That's what I heard the comment was, the middle of the night, and they can't find any place to buy.
Yeah, and like, that's another big concern, like, like I said, with those servers and things like that. Um, a lot of them even don't have cars and things of that nature, so they're forced to, like, walk into the dispensary or walk to that place. Um, and the, I mean, most restaurants in Yukon, I believe, you can tag me for a while, but I believe they close around ten. Um, and so if we were closing down, I mean, even, I think the hours nine to ten should be adjusted a little bit, but that's not what we were discussing today, but, um, with that, like, they're only able to access it at certain times, and so if we, if we limit it to only certain days, and it just, it, I guess, wouldn't work.
So they have access now?
Yeah, yes.
Well, I guess, uh, thank you. I, I think my point to consider would be that if, if those are the reasons that we're adjusting the time, then the next, um, request is going to be twenty-four-hour service. So my position is that I would support the current changes, based on a simple, practical issue, is that why are we taking one day of the week and saying, okay, you can only have so many hours that day? Uh, but if the reason is that people need access to this twenty-four-seven, the council needs to make a strong consideration as to whether that's something we're prepared to approve or not.
But I think what they're saying to, I mean, because when we made this ordinance back in two thousand and eighteen, again, we were all new at this, um, but what they're saying is that they can get there by ten o'clock and be prepared for the middle of the night, um, because they can buy if we do it on a daily basis.
Do I have to state my?
No, not again.
Um, so we have patients that, you know, get off, you know, ten, you know, eleven o'clock. Say we, you know, again, this is a different meaning, you know, the rest of this, but say they, we close at ten, they get off at ten. You know, there's no possible way, you know, to get to us, to get their medical needs for that night. And I know some patients, um, you know, they don't, they don't like to get the, the, the legal amount just because, you know, what if they, you know, what if that certain thing doesn't necessarily work? Then they're stuck with all this, and then they wasted all that money. So, you know, some, most of our patients buy, you know, you know, what, if, if they find something that they, that, 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 that works, yes, they buy abundance of, and we make sure we're stocked. But, you know, with, with metric and, and everything else, like, we still can't even take, you know, we purchase, you know, something that a patient, you know, needs for a certain location, I can't take that product to this location and be like, oh, here you go. That would fall back on us, and we would severely be in trouble, um, so. If that helps.
Thanks.
Want to add one thing to that real quick. Um, also, so I work at the Bethany location for Elevate, um, so our hours of operation are a little bit different. We are able to stay open, we could, we could go twenty-four hours if we wanted to, but we're, right now, I think we're at twelve P. M. That's, or eleven P. M., that's when we shut down. Um, and I have noticed a very high increase in traffic around those hours from Yukon patients that are driving however late at night to go do that. And so another issue that I would bring up is the safety on our roads. That's another thing that this, that, that this brings an issue with, is the safety on our roads, because we are having patients after eight-hour shifts go ahead and driving all the way fifteen minutes to Bethany and fifteen minutes back into Yukon, endangering all the other citizens if they're tired or whatever, just to get their medicine whenever they could access it right here in their hometown. So I don't think that, like, necessarily ten P. M. is even really that good, but it's better than what we have now, for sure. So I'm, we, I think there, at some point, maybe in a different meeting or whatever, we need to look at maybe even going past that to twelve or something like that. But as a Bethany employee, as someone who sees it pretty much every day, like, there is a massive influx of people coming from Yukon to other cities and giving the tax money and the local revenue to other places, so I think that's another thing to consider as well.
Are you wanting to look at amending?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. Okay. I thought that's what you were thinking. All right, let's vote then.
No, wait.
Oh, state your name and address.
My name is Jacques Chancelon, I'm the owner of Elevate Dispensary in Yukon. I, uh...
He didn't understand you.
My name is Jacques Chancelon, I'm the owner of Elevate Dispensary in Yukon.
And what's your address?
Uh, seven one three Wendy Lane, uh, seven three zero nine nine.
Your address?
Seven, uh, seven one three Wendy Lane, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Wendy Lane?
Wendy.
Wendy Lane.
Like, W. I. N. D. Y. Wendy, yeah, Wendy City.
We have old ears.
Speaks fast. But whenever we opened up the store in Yukon, my intention was never to be twenty-four hours. Uh, it was really just to catch, you know, all, to, to capture all the patients, you know, potential patients that were, or, you know, getting off of work here in Yukon, like, you know, for example, like you said, the wait, the waiters, the waitresses getting off at work at, like, you know, at B-Dubs or whatever it is, at two o'clock in the morning. But obviously, I never opened till two. Uh, I never thought it was reasonable to kind of, a pointless tale, kind of, open till, always open till twelve, till midnight, and that was really just about it. We do, now, we do have people that come from, like, Weatherford, Glanton, um, how, you know, like, Durant, that come all the way to our, to Yukon, just because, you know, the, the prices that we offer to patients are really good. We try to pass the best deals to the customers, to the patients, because we, we're not, we're not trying to beat customers over the head for, for money. Uh, we're in it for, to help the patients out. Um, and, you know, sometimes on Sundays as well, um, these people that work six, seven days, you know, five, six days a week, they can't make it but any day but Sundays, especially if they live three hours away, you know, and especially, you know, if they like our store, it's like we offer, um, that's where they, that's where they come, so. But yeah, anyway, uh, we, we just didn't want to open till, we never went to, wanted to be twenty-four hours. If we did, that's why we kind of did the Bethany thing, but obviously, we're still not, we're still, we're still not quite there yet, and I don't think there's way that, that great of a need to open past, like, two, to be completely honest with you, so, um, yeah, that's my side.
Thank you. All right, so, uh, the motion is to leave it as is, nine A. M. To ten P. M., Monday through Monday, seven days a week. Okay? Let's vote, please.
Wooten?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gilliland?
Yes.
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Okay, nine A, consider an emergency clause of ordinance number fourteen thirty-seven. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gillen?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
All right, item ten, consider a motion to approve the request to advertise for a letter of interest and statement of qualifications to conduct a utility rate study for the Yukon Municipal Authority, city of Yukon, as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Wooton?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item eleven, consider approving amendment number one for the Jackie Cooper Gymnasium Exterior Rehabilitation Project for a decrease of twenty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Item twelve, consider accepting the Jackie Cooper Gymnasium Exterior Rehabilitation Project and placing the maintenance bond into effect to serve Jackie Cooper Gymnasium, located at ten twenty-four East Main Street, Yukon, Oklahoma, as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Selby?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Item thirteen, consider a motion to approve the cost for Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC for a sanitary sewer rehabilitation located at one oh oh two Cherrywood Lane to twelve oh two Cherrywood Lane, in the amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents to be paid by the American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA funds, using the two thousand twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Item fourteen, consider a motion to approve the cost for Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC for sanitary sewer rehabilitation located at eleven ten South First Street to two oh three West Bass Avenue, in the amount not to exceed a hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and twenty cents to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, which is ARPA funds, using two thousand twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote, please.
Gillen?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Item fifteen, consider a motion to approve the cost for Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC for sanitary sewer rehabilitation located at forty-six North Kimball Road to four ten Owen Avenue, in the amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand seven hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifteen cents to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, using the two thousand twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vote, please.
Wooton?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes. Item sixteen, consider a motion to approve the cost for Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC for a sanitary sewer rehabilitation located at one twelve Utah Avenue to four oh four Spruce Avenue, in the amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand three hundred thirty dollars and fifty cents to be paid from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, using the two thousand twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll be saying that in my sleep tonight. Item seventeen, consider a motion.
We need to vote.
Oh, sorry, I just voted us down. All right, let's vote, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
See, I'm saving us some time. Item seventeen, consider a motion to approve the cost for Brewer Construction Oklahoma LLC for sanitary sewer rehabilitation located at fifteen oh one Summerton Place to fifteen oh four Summerton Place in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty cents to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, using the two thousand twenty-three Yukon Concrete Asphalt Paving Drainage Water and Sewer Contract as recommended by the Public Works Director. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Gillen?
Yes.
Wooton?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
All right, any new business?
None this evening, Madam Mayor.
All right, let's do council discussion, we'll start with you, Councilwoman Yanda.
Well, I just want to encourage everyone to think of safety first as you enjoy the July the fourth holiday, thank you.
Okay, Councilman, or Vice Mayor Wooton?
That's what I was gonna say.
I know.
Yeah, be safe, while we're popping fireworks.
Next time, I remember to go this way, so he has to come up on his own. Okay, any other things?
Be safe.
All right, Councilwoman, uh, Zimmerman?
Yeah, I wanted to take a second and give a shout out to one of our city employees, Carlos from Public Works. On Father's Day, the Sunday of Father's Day, we noticed some sewer issues brewing, and I called the emergency line, and he came out and looked above our house and below it, and cleared out a little blockage, and was, was a great guy. So I really appreciate his work, probably saved us a lot of problems. And then, yeah, going on the Fourth of July holiday, hey, remember, we're celebrating the birth of the first country of its kind on that day, so remember that, and I want to wish my wife a happy early anniversary on the Fourth.
You still have to buy her a present?
Yes, yes, I did.
Councilwoman Gillen?
Nothing more tonight.
That it?
That's it.
All right. And I'd like to wish County, uh, the Court Clerk, Mandy Zaharond Rodney, right, did I get it right?